Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you all will take your seats, please. Thank you very much for coming this evening. This is a special town hall that we're calling to discuss and receive your questions and concerns about the new contract that we have coming up with Republic for waste and recycling pickup. At the outset, I want to introduce to you the members of your city council that are here tonight. Councilmember at large, Patrick Harvey. Councilmember Joe Vera Cruz from District One. Councilmember Don McBurnett from District Two. Councilmember Monte Anderson from District Three. And Councilmember from District Four, Mr. Mark Cooks. And I believe Councilmember Jeanette Jamison from District Five may be coming along shortly. So again, once again, thank you for coming tonight. It's an opportunity for us as a council and for staff to be able to discuss with you those pertinent issues that occur in our city from time to time. And we know that everything, sometimes especially those things that have to come to be that impacts your discretionary income, is of great concern. And that's what this new contract is. Everything that has happened in the past few months in terms of how we have had to negotiate with Republic as our waste pickup provider, the council and the staff have exerted what I would consider extreme due diligence. Whatever appears in other media in terms of how we have operated as council and staff sometimes does not contain all of the information necessary to give an accurate depiction of what we have debated about. We have been concerned about this for going on a year now. We knew this contract was coming up, and council and staff have been debating about how to best serve our city with the new contract. The first thing that I want to address about this is that there was some concern about doing a sole source negotiation with our current provider, with Republic Services. And by the way, Republic Services is here tonight. They have several representatives here of senior management, and if we as council and staff cannot answer those questions, we are going to turn it over to Republic themselves to answer those specific questions. Secondly, the information that we have provided on why we chose to go with Republic came not just simply from our personal inputs. What was very, what's the word I'm looking for? It was, we appreciated an enormous amount of citizen input on this issue. We asked for it, and you gave it to us. Every one of us on city council received a multitude of emails and telephone calls with your perspectives and your preferences. I said it in city council at least two or three times, and I'll reiterate it again for you here tonight. There was a great deal of input to me personally and to the others. Seems like we had a compilation of information, and many, many of our citizens said, "Don't change the scope of our service." Do not change the scope of our service. What did that tell us? There was no mention in that, in fact, there were very few that said, "Please don't change the scope of our service, and if the price has to go up, it's okay." That's true. That's the inputs that we received. A lot of us received that input. And others said, "Well, if you have to change the scope of our service, we understand that there's going to be some price increase. Would you please do everything you can to minimize it?" And that we did. It may not appear so, but when you see the information presented to you tonight, I believe you will understand how and why that process was evolved. We in city council, when the final decision was made, and we were presented with all the information, and which you will see tonight, by the way, you're going to see a vast amount of information, which is the same information we received in order to come to a decision about this. That information basically said, "How do we encompass our current service?" Because that's what the inputs said to us, "With the minimum amount of impact on your wallet, on my wallet, on their wallet." We empathized. We sympathized. We put ourselves in your position and said, "How can we accommodate what most of our citizens are asking for?" And I'll digress for a minute. Most of our citizens, we live in a great country of democracy. And democracy means majority rules. And sometimes what the majority receives, those who don't receive that sometimes get upset. That's life. I had a boss once, very senior official in the United States Army with some stuff all over his shoulders, and I complained to him one day about the way things were operating, and he said, "Gordon, life ain't fair. Now go sit down." That was a great lesson for me, but it's understandable, and it's sometimes it's hard to take that, that majority does rule, because that's the Republic and it's the foundation of our nation. It's what makes us the greatest nation on earth. So we as council receiving this information in terms of what you would like to have, keep the same service and minimize the financial impact. Those are the two pillars of everything that we did in considering all this. Keep the same service as much as we possibly could and minimize the financial impact. The result of what is coming is exactly that. We did that. Is the price going to go up? Yes. What doesn't go up? In an economy, everything moves at some point in time. That's another feature of our democracy. It's called capitalism. And capitalism has a bottom line pillar called profit. And what we're dealing with is an organization called Republic Services as a multi-million-dollar company with vast resources, and they have responsibility to whom? Their stakeholders, their shareholders as well. So this becomes a little complex, but it still comes into a peculiar and perfect balance of understanding, let's do what we need to do to benefit our partner in business and you, our citizens. The greatest citizens that we consider in the state of Texas. We never do anything to intentionally hurt what happens in our city. We love you. We love our city. Some of the decisions that we face on council are tough ones. Some of them we prefer to not have to make, but we do. And this is what we're here for tonight. We want to be able to explain to you the processes, the complexity, the details that we went through in order to arrive at this contract that's coming up, and so that you can understand how it is beneficial to both Republic and to us, and the minor changes that were made. You're going to see some very, very specific options that were laid out to us in concert with what Republic did. And if you listen to the tape of the night that we made this decision, it was not an easy one, because we kept going back to, what do our citizens want? How do we give them what they want? And how do we do it with the least cost and least impact? And we went round and round and round and round. And what we finally ended up with, if you take the contract and break it into four pieces, what do we have? We have waste pickup. We have recycling pickup. And we have bulk pickup. And then each of those are going to be segregated into time. How much per week? So when we looked at that and said, "Okay, what do our citizens want? Do not change the current options that we have." So what do we now have? We used to have bags on the curb twice a week. What does the new contract have? Bags on the curb twice a week. Our citizens ask, "Do not get rid of recycling once a week." What do we have? We still have recycling on the curb once a week. The change, the major change that has occurred, oh, Councilman, Councilmember Jeanette Jamison, welcome. Thank you. The change in what we used to have to what we have today comes in the bulk pickup, those tree limbs. And that's where things are going to be explained to you so you understand how that change had occurred. And we're going to get information from Republic so that they can tell us as well what the impact of unlimited bulk pickup does to them and for us. Now, I'm going to try to explain, and we did talk about this in council as well. When we as individuals or we as citizens contract with the company to come in and trim our trees, which most of us do, we end up with an entire sidewalk full of tree limbs, don't we? With that entire sidewalk full of tree limbs, under the old, or the current contract as it stands today, you can put as much out there as you want to with no change in the monthly billing fee for that. So interestingly, what we have is an opportunity for each of us. We can call a commercial arborist to come in and trim our trees, pile up on our sidewalk tree limbs, 20, 30 feet long, six, seven feet high, which we've seen. Don't you see it? And Republic will come and pick it up with no change in what we charge, what they charge us. What Republic has told us is that they cannot continue to do that basically for free. So if we as a citizen called in a commercial contractor and have our trees trimmed and create that kind of bulk waste on the sidewalk, and we tell the contractor, and say, and ask the contractor, "Well, will you haul this away?" And the contractor says, "Well, yeah, sure. I'll charge a hundred bucks to take it away." What do we do? Nah, just leave it there. The city will get it later sometime. That absolves the contractor that you hired, that we hired to trim our trees, of taking the responsibility, and it's a rightful charge, because they have to have the labor to pile that stuff up. They have to pay for a fee to go to the city dump to dump that out. So they're asking for a reasonable amount of money to take that away. And by the same factor, that same amount of money also falls on Republic for doing it absolutely under the current contract. So what we had to negotiate with Republic was a limited bulk pickup. And that limited bulk pickup is now, is going to be four cubic yards. And you're going to see some slides in terms of how you equate what is four cubic yards. I'm not going to try to explain it. There's going to be some pictures. I'm going to show that to you to give you some examples of it. So putting all this together, I'm going to wrap up before giving, turning it over to staff to give you the details of this and understanding all the factors. I'm going to reiterate some very, very important points. And you might think this is unnecessary, but to me, it is very necessary. We do everything we possibly can to benefit you financially. This is one aspect of city services. And we did everything we possibly could to accommodate the majority of the desires. The majority of the desires was, "Do not change my service, and I'll pay a little more if you don't, if you just leave it with me." And that's what we have. There are others that said, "I don't care what you do, but don't change the price." That can't happen. That kind of a balance and that kind of dynamic is not consonant with business practice. So that's where we have. We did, we as a council and we as a staff, did everything we possibly could to accommodate the majority of opinion with the least amount of financial impact on your wallet. And it is my sincere hope and desire that you understand that. Some may need acquiescence to understand that, and I will accept that as well. But this is a tough one for us, and I hope you can come away with that understanding as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our staff. Mr. Greg Ramey is going to take over. He is our Director of Public Works, and this particular service falls under his jurisdiction. So he's the best individual to go into this information. Greg?
Thank you, sir. Again, Mayor, council, citizens of Duncanville, thank you for being here tonight. As Mayor mentioned, I'm Greg Ramey. I am the Public Works Director. And I'll be talking with you about the solid waste recycling contract and the process that we have to get here and some of the other details regarding this contract. I also just want to let you know later on in the briefing, I'll be turning over the mic to Ms. Robyn Moda, who is our representative with Republic who supports us. And she'll give you a few other slides, especially as you'll see in the briefing that recycling and the details with the recycling market have really manifested itself today in America, and she'll talk a little bit more about it. Something else I want to point out, let me make sure this is on while I'm here, is I think everybody has the flyers. I'll be, a lot of the information I'm putting out tonight is on these flyers, as well as some information cards regarding two of our upcoming solid waste collection events. And again, I'll talk about those a little bit further in the briefing, but again, I wanted to make sure everybody had those. And for the folks that will go home and talk with their neighbors about this as well, we will be sending this flyer out, again, in the mail for folks so that they, you know, even the folks at home will have an ability to understand what the changes are, especially as you see with, as it pertains to bulk and brush pickup. So let me just get started. So the contract that we are finishing up started 20 years ago. You know, as we, sorry about that. Started 20 years ago, and the reality is the mayor talked about is, you know, 20 years ago, the contract and the indexes that were used, as we'll talk about later, the recycling contracts or the recycling market that was in place 20 years ago, you know, sort of set those prices and how everything was increased over time. And what we found is that the old indexes that we use and the recycling market are no longer valid, and in fact, they have not kept pace with the current market. As the mayor said, again, we've been working with city councils since fall of 2018 at their council retreat, let them know that the contract was coming up and that we would be presenting them with some information and a lot of decision points for their consideration as we walk through this process. And winter 2019 was when we got the go-ahead to pursue sole source. As the mayor said, that was informed by the public, informed by the market as well. What we're dealing with these days is a consolidation. There's really only three players in the solid waste collection business, and they're all neck and neck on pricing. In April, again, we went back to council. We presented some initial levels of presentate, of service with some rough cost estimates. At that time, we were directed to look into possibly operating a recycling center in lieu of curbside service. As you'll see, that was not, ended up being the preferred or the chosen course of action. In June, council provided us their preliminary service level selection, which is what we brought to council. And then, as the mayor mentioned it well in his speech, in July, after much deliberation, they made their final choice. Something just real quick for the group. At the end, I'll have some questions, an opportunity for questions, and staff will be coming around with microphones. Because this meeting is televised and recorded for, again, the public that's at home, we ask that you just wait for the microphone when that time comes. But again, I'll take the questions at the end. Again, as the mayor said, service options. So these are the five service options that we negotiated with Republic and brought to council for their consideration. So let me just walk you through the column headers up at the top. Again, you'll see the options going from left to right. You'll see the choices that we had for garbage in terms of bags and how often they were picked up. We even considered a cart option. Then you'll see that we looked at recycling, on how that would be picked up, how often it would be picked up, and again, size. And then we looked at the bulk and brush, looking at the reduced bulk and brush of four cubic yards, as well as continuing to bring out the boom truck for the really large loads. And you'll see that these are the costs. These are the actual costs that were brought to us by Republic. I do want to point out as well with sole source, in a sole source contract, this is no different than sole source contracts that I've dealt with when I was in the federal government or with other contracts that we've had with cities. But, you know, Republic in a sole source contract, they brought us all their information and their cost justification and how they came up with these prices. And they showed us that the prices that they use, the unit prices that they used when calculating these columns here were the same unit prices that they had with the other winning bids that they had over the last year. Oh, I'm really sorry about that. Let me, is this good? I'm sorry. And so I just want to make sure that that's, again, that's inherent in a sole source. And the other thing about sole source, which makes it very beautiful, is that the scope of work throughout the process is something that can be massaged and negotiated as we work through the process. And again, as we work across the rows, again, the existing contract is the one in yellow, and the X's correspond to that level of service. And so, as you see with the existing, you all are, you're familiar with that, twice a week bags, once a week with the recycle bin, and then unlimited with the boom truck. And that was the 1127. If we were to continue that level of service, which is what selection or service level one or service option one, again, it would be continuing on, but it would be $18.11. And one other thing, again, is the unlimited was no longer something that we could ever do, and so it would just be a 10-yard going into the future. So that was $18. And again, the course of action that was selected by council is option two, which again has the no change in the bags, no change in the recycling. The change here is with the four cubic yards, which is the revised bulk and brush. And I'll go into some more slides so you can see what it is, and then we have a mock-up in the back that you can refer to as well. And so that was, this was the choice that council did. We looked at a bunch of other options. Again, we presented council options for consideration for folks that may be, you know, if the majority of the public came in and council directed, we want to pursue the lowest cost option. We looked at alternative costs. We tried to think outside the box with the no recycling option. We looked at having carts, you know, for trash and for, you know, recycling. So again, we looked at a lot of other stuff. And again, with the council, after hearing your input and deciding, picked option two, which is what we're going forward with. So again, one thing I also want to just clarify is, I know you're looking at the first chart and you saw the 1584, and when you get those bills in October, you're going to go, "Well, that's not what I'm paying. What's the rest of the deal?" So again, the light blue reflects the part of your utility bill that goes to the solid waste collection. The red are the additional costs that are associated with the solid waste as a program. This is an enterprise, and it has to be self-funding. And so the red part represents the amount, part of that red represents the fee we pay to Skyline for the landfill to take the trash, or to Organics to take the larger brush. It goes and pays for the litter crew that keeps the arterials clean and looking nice. And it goes to the alley CIP. I'm sure you've seen, if you've gone down Cockroo Hill in the last few years, we've been slowly working through those and rebuilding those alleys, and we'll continue to do that. But that money is, also comes out of that fee because the, what really tears up alleys are those garbage trucks. But that's, you know, how the service is set up. And so again, what you're looking at on the left-hand side with these two is if you have curbside pickup, you'll be experiencing a $4.50 increase in your monthly bill. And if you have alley pickup, that's the two here, you'll be going, it'll be a $5 increase in your bill. And as, again, you will see that a lot of it is just due to the fact that the collection costs in the market, we've done a correction after 20 years. So again, let me talk about the service highlights. Again, the, all this information is in your flyers, so just keep referring to those. And again, if you have some questions later on, we can talk about that. But again, the level of service as selected by council, trash bags continue at twice a week. Again, no change. The recycling is no change with the 18-gallon bin. Again, the highlight is the bulk and brush, which is now once per month and is limited to four cubic yards. And I've got several slides to talk more about that to help you understand sort of what that looks like and what that means. We also continue to support to the mobility impaired. So we do have roughly two dozen citizens in the city that Republic actually goes and gets their trash from their house, because they're, you know, they're at the point where they cannot take the trash out, and that service continues with this contract. But it does also now have some optional services. So in the past, we've always been using the 18-gallon bins, but now there is an option for you as citizens to contact Republic and rent from them a 96-gallon recycle cart. There's, you know, we do have, we rerun the gamut in the city of folks who don't recycle at all. We have folks that recycle a little bit, and we do have a bunch of folks that recycle a lot. And so the cart is really set up for those people, and we, you know, that option is provided with Republic for those who are really big in the recycling. Now, we'll talk more about what can and can't go in a recycling, but again, those cart is an option that you can look at. Later on tonight, as we finish, we do have an 18-gallon bin available, and we also have an example of a 96-gallon recycle cart for those who might be interested in that option. The final thing, and I'll go to it a little bit further again with bulk and brush, but the bottom line is, is that if you have bulk and brush that exceeds the four cubic yards, there is an option where you can call Republic and you work directly with them. They'll come out and look at how much bulk, how much brush you have, and they'll give you a quote for how much it would cost for that to be removed. And that, and those prices and that detail will follow as well. So again, just some contract highlights for those that are into that. This initial term is a seven-year term, and it does have five-year increases. There are some indexing as well. Every contract that's multi-year allows for inflation. There's always something that may institute adjustments. A lot of times, you know, we don't know what the federal governments were going to do. We certainly don't know, you know, we don't know what the state department, state government is going to do, and sometimes those things may have implications on the contract or how we have to do it. And again, it's, we don't anticipate that, but again, that is there. And then again, Duncanville will continue to invoice and work out individual arrangements with the commercial industrial customers, because those are the ones that deal with the dumpsters. For the very, very small commercial entities, maybe like an accountant's office, et cetera, they still will have the option to have more of a curbside service when you only have a few bags of trash. As I mentioned in the handout, one of the things that you see is the bulk and brush collection map. Now, this is a change from what you have experienced previously. Again, we're going from the old way of picking up, which is they'll just Again, we're going from the old way of, of picking up, which is they'll just, they work in, the brush truck would just do a big circuit through the city, divide it up into ten units, and they would just do a big circuit. And now what they're doing is they're incorporating, when they're doing bulk and brush, with the same weeks, or, and they're using it as part of their pickup cycle of their normal garbage. So they're not using the brush truck anymore. They're using the crews that would pick up your garbage are now picking up any bulk and brush within that four cubic yards. So what we had to do is work with our G I, our G I S tech here in the city, we worked in Republic, and we had to basically break the city up into four relatively even segments that we tried to maintain some level of continuousness. What you'll see here again is the green is the folks that would be in the first week of the month. Pink is the second week, and it goes on down. And you'll notice here in October, which is when this starts, which is the week of the sixth, you'll see the, the weeks based on where you live. And then again, in the big flyer we gave you, it lists out the entire, the rest of this calendar year, and it goes into next year, so you know when you will be able to put out your bulk and brush. Now, what we do ask is that, for example, if you are the green week, that you put out your bulk and brush by Sunday night or Monday morning. I know most people put out Sunday night because they're not going to put that stuff out before you go to work. But during that week is when Republic will, one, make an assessment of that zone and see what kind of level of effort they have to put out to get that trash cleaned up, or the bulk and brush cleaned up. And it gives them the whole week to get that stuff out of your, out of your neighborhoods. And then so on and so forth. So again, our, you know, our goal is that the trash is put out, or your bulk and brush is put out the, the weekend before, because again, we don't, we know people don't want to be dealing with that stuff during the work week. But at the end of the day, make sure it's put out before your second pickup of the week of, for garbage. That is definitely what we want to make sure, because that's usually the lighter week, lighter day of the week, usually the first one is when you get the whole weekend worth of sacks. So again, what is four cubic yards? So the first thing I want to highlight is in the back here, if you look, or look over to the side here, you'll see this white PVC frame, that is four cubic yards. And you'll notice that we've gone through and put in a, a big wash machine box, we put in some chairs, we put in some brush, we put in some other rubbish. You'll have, there's some samples of the appropriate way to bundle your brush. But you can see that is, that is a lot of, of space. It's what goes in the back of a pickup truck, as you see here, roughly four feet high to the top of your F-150 pickup truck, and it's the full bed. Now, this is not the crew cab, we've got the little five-foot bed, but, you know, what fits in the back of a pickup truck is what we're talking about. Again, I want to highlight that now we need to have it bundled, see the little cables, four foot wide, fifty, fifty pounds. Now again, we no longer are using a brush truck with the big boom and the claw, your brush will be collected by the collection crew. So it's got to be able to be picked up by, by one of the trash collection workers. So we can't have the big bundles. And then just another way for visual purposes, you'll see that roughly four wash machines side by side is, is four cubic yards. It's, it's not a small amount of brush. And so again, these are just some things to think about. As the mayor said, when you're having somebody come and you have a tree service come and take care of your trees for you, we want them to take that with them. There's some other options we'll talk about, but again, you know, we're paying, you're going to pay roughly about a hundred dollars an hour for Republic's brush truck to come out, collect the brush, and then take it to be disposed of. And here's some piles, like the mayor said, this is, this is two hundred, about two hundred dollars, this is like two truckloads of brush. This down here represents about one truckload of brush. So these are, these are what we're talking about and why we're, we're trying to tell you to make sure your contractors, as you're hiring them, come and take those materials away with them. So again, here's some other options. All right, first of all, if the brush that's put out is over four yards, it's not going to be picked up as part of the normal service. So again, as I talked about, have the contractor take their, your limbs and, you know, whatever else, take them with you when they, when they leave. You do have some options, if you're one that's doing your own maintenance of your trees, take your brush to organics. It's thirty-minute drive, it's twenty, twenty-five dollars for them to take your brush and mulch it for you. If you have bulk, bulk items that exceed the four cubic yards, you can take it to Skyline yourself, bring your utility bill, and it's thirty-five dollars to take care of that as well. And then finally, as I talked about, Republic can always come and, and pick it up for you if you don't have the means or, or the, you know, the interest of taking it out to the landfill or organics. Let's talk about recycling a little bit. Robin from Republic will go into a little bit more of description about the realities of the recycling market right now. But the bottom line is, is that recycling used to make money, and we would use that money, or that profit from selling those recycled materials to offset the collection costs associated with the solid waste contract. And again, that is not the reality anymore. We don't, the market is, is just not there, and again, Robin will talk a little bit about that. Some other change, I know, I know this one came up in the, at the city council meeting with people with concerns, they were surprised about glass. Glass is no longer something that we will accept as recycling. Frankly, it's very heavy, it costs a lot of money to transport it, and there's no market for it. So if you don't have anybody who wants it, and it's costs a lot of money to haul it, it's, it's just not something that we want to, we're able to take. Only some plastics. Now again, Robin will talk about it, that, you know, certain things that you think all plastics, well, she'll talk about thing, you know, do some myth busting with you on, on what kind of plastics people take and won't take. But again, make sure if you're recycling plastic, look at the plastic, certain codes are accepted and certain codes nobody wants. And that's the stuff that you just need to go and put in the, in, in the, in the regular garbage. It's got to be clean and dry, it's got to be minimally contaminated. And again, Robin will talk about the reality on expectation. They used to take a lot of really, you know, what I'd say, really nasty stuff. You know, throw away your milk jug, it might have a little bit of milk on the bottom of it, yeah, they'll still take it, not anymore. Your peanut butter jar, maybe back in the day, had a little bit of peanut butter on the bottom, they'd take it, not anymore. So just understanding, you know, how the recycling market is, I think is very critical for this. And again, you'll see the, the two sizes of, of recycling containers, and, and again, they're both in the back for people to look at physically as well. The future activities, as we said, you know, the twenty-year contract is ending on September twenty-first, but what, you will not see anything in terms of changes to your service until the week of sixth October, which was that green week on my map, and you'll see it again on, on your slides. That is when the four cubic yard bulk and brush pickup goes into effect. And again, on the first, we'll have that same traveling, the same traveling road show available at National Night Out, and in case you have more questions for us after this meeting, or again, you go back and talk to your friends and neighbors about this town hall, and then they have some questions, again, invite them out to National Night Out, and we'll have a booth, and we'll have these same things up for people to see. Again, the mailers that you have out tonight will also be, you'll find those in the mail. And again, we'll be sending those to everybody in Duncanville. All the residential trash customers will be getting the, this flyer in the mail at their house. And again, we try to make it one page, I know it's a lot of information, but the idea was that you'd be able to, you know, have one thing to put on your refrigerator. And again, just make sure if you didn't get one of these, I know we were trying to hand them all out, please make sure you bring one home with you. And again, we've also got for your taking home, and we'll talk about a little bit later, about some information about some upcoming solid waste collection events. With that, I will turn it over to Robin, and she'll talk you, again, talk with you a little bit more about Republic Services and the recycling.
Good evening, council, mayor, and citizens. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I am Robin Moda with Republic Services, and I have been with the company for twenty-one years. I am the manager of municipal services with the company. Tonight I have here with me our general manager, Scott Hempel, who is in the back left, our operations manager, Randy Howcomb, and our route supervisor for Duncanville, Anthony Macias, who makes everything happen day-to-day here for us. I promise to be very quick so that we can get to Q and A, and with that said, I'm going to scoot to the side so everyone can see, but I'm going to try very hard to stick to my notes, because if I stick to my notes, I'll be quick. So, history with Republic. We have been very appreciative of the relationship, the twenty-year relationship here with the city of Duncanville. And with that, we have provided reliable, long-lasting, durable customer service. Within those, the past couple of years, we have been recognized with America's Ford, excuse me, Forbes, America's Best Large Employers List, Most Innovative Company. We have also been included with the Dow Jones Sustainable North America and World Indices. Republic also awarded the Gold Class Award in twenty-eighteen Rebecca Sam Sustainability. In addition, Glassdoor honored the company with the Employee Choice Award. We received the one of the twenty-eighteen Most Ethical Companies by the Ethistere Institute, and most recently, we were awarded the Best Employer for Women by Forbes, which always, that was in twenty-nineteen, which always shocks people because they don't think of a trash company having that many women, but we do. So at Republic Services, it is our goal to keep our rates competitive in the industry. Every, all of the vendors here, we all buy plastic containers, we all buy plastic carts, we all buy trash, trash trucks. However, what sets us apart is our employees. It's very important to us in our industry to hire the very best employees. While you are away at work, it's important for the employees that are driving our, your streets to be safe, the employees that are driving your streets and your, your, your children to be safe, and that's what sets us apart is our employees. With that is the vehicles that are, that they're driving in, because all of them are equipped with new technology, as you know, with your cars. It's almost impossible to go out and buy a vehicle these days without that technology, without a touchscreen or a GPS, and with that comes cost. So with our cost, that piece, and then our piece of the employee that rises our, our costs a little bit on that piece, but the most important piece for us is that employee and our safety. Safety at Republic Services is number one for us with our employees and for safety in your neighborhood. I want to make sure I stay on task. So when you see our crews, we are always say, you'll always see us in uniform, because that's important for us. And with that, we just want to make sure that you understand that when your city council was vetting, not only with us, but vetting other companies also in renewing this contract, they did a very thorough job in making sure that, to consider to hire the most safe and secure and number one company to run your streets. I'm proud to say, not only do we work here, but we also have twelve employees that live here. We have seven of those employees that live here that also work here on your streets every day. Actually, with customer service. So we recognize that when customers have questions regarding service, a speedy response is expected, and we strive for that first call resolution. So a few years ago, we made a major change with our customer service departments, and we invested in enhancement of the quality of customer service capabilities. So to accomplish that, we merged our call centers, and we now have three call centers to answer, to answer calls, a total of fifteen hours per day. So seven AM on the eastern side, all the way to seven PM on the Pacific time. So you have fifteen hours that you can call in, so if you're calling in before work or after work, you now, now have that availability to you. Now we can go to the fun. So a little bit of history, what's been going on in the industry. So the topic started about a year and a half, two years ago, and some pretty significant changes in the market. It started with some big international changes with China Sword, or with China, but some other things also started here on the American side with some changes in the materials that we were recycling. So how many people still get your newspaper at your curb? Few hands, few hands. So the hands get smaller and smaller in my, in my conversations. A lot of us get our news on our computer, on our iPhones, on our iPads. However, with these changes, the, our centers, our recycle centers are still set up, were still designed to take the newsprint. And so, and newsprint is still valuable, has, let me rephrase that, still has value. However, we're not getting that very much of that newsprint because not many people are taking it. There's only two mills that are still printing paper in North America, and they're in Canada. So you can tell that that's kind of dying away. The next example is always a really interesting one in the, in the room. So everyone knows when you see that orange bottle, can you see? That orange bottle is a Tide bottle. That orange bottle is a very thick, the liquid Tide, is a very thick polyethylene bottle, and it's very desirable to the recycle companies, and very recyclable, very recyclable. So everyone, not everyone, many people have moved over to the Tide pods. Those Tide pods come in a very thin plastic container, and we have been conditioned, when we see that orange plastic, that orange Tide bottle liquid was very recyclable, so why wouldn't this one be? However, that orange Tide pod container is made of the same plastic that your water bottles are made out of on your table, and it is, there's no buyer for it, except for Tide, who is not driving to my Plano, Murf to buy that container, or driving to Texas to buy that container, and therefore, it's being, being pulled out and going to the landfill. So there's not a buyer for it. So that's not a recyclable market. So instead of putting it in your recycle bin, it needs to go into your trash bin. That and the container on the right, which, if you're getting it in a plastic bag. So it's just education, getting to know what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. The last example there on the, on the bottom of the page is the water bottle, and everyone knows the water bottle these days. We all know to open it away from us, not on top of an, an important document, not on top of our laps, because if you open it on top of you, pretty much you're going to get some sort of spillage, because they're made so thinly. The manufacturers, we've got to give it to them, have done an excellent job at making them just exactly the right thickness, so that if they stack another pallet of water in that eighteen-wheeler on top of them, they will crush. But they've got them exactly the right, the right thickness, so that they don't crush in that eighteen-wheeler. So with that, we still need the same amount of return, the same amount of product, to make a ton of plastic to send off to the, to the vendors, but we're not getting the same quantity, the same number of transactions. So we're needing double the transactions, because now they're so thin, to provide the same cube of plastic. So that really throws a wrench and creates a, a big operational challenge for us. Ready? Yes, sir. So I touched briefly on China earlier, and this is where we're going to talk about the impact. This is, and- This is, and Greg talked about it briefly earlier. So, recycling in the past was based on material finding its way to one of the many commodity markets around the world, and China was a buyer of 40% of the world's mixed paper. And China, earlier this year, completely shut their doors on mixed paper. And what mixed paper is to you and to me is your junk mail, your bills, any of that type of mail. They were taking 40% of the nations, and they just said, "No more, we're not going to take it." I still get my junk mail, and I can't put it in the trash, I've got to put it in my recycle bin. We're still running a truck down your street to pick up your recycle, and I still have to find a home for that junk mail. So, we're still going to continue to do it, but now it's not going to China. So, when they closed their doors, there was a flood of material across the world, not just from here, but across the world in the markets. It caused the value to drop, to drop to zero. Additionally, the individual contracts with the cities across the country were out of line, so all, not just here in Texas, but all over the country, recycle contracts are now out of line because of the changes in China. And then, we are addressing, not just Republic Services, but everyone's addressing these contracts and trying to get them back in line due to these issues. So, and we're all finding homes for these recycle commodities now because of that change, and so we're finding homes here, we're finding homes in other countries to send not only the mixed paper, but there's also other products that we're going to China that now we're having to find homes for. This slide, the main piece of this slide is just, you can see over the past few years, this continual decline here of plastics, this is of plastics, but of the cost of, or actually, the return of commodity continuing to go down further and further. That's really the main point of that slide. It shows the three years, but... So, education, this is where we, where do we go from here? So, this is education. Paper and cardboard is pretty, up on that top right corner, is pretty straightforward, and it's, you know, it's pretty straightforward. Paper and cardboard is good to put in your recycle bin, and I'm going to go down to the bottom real quick. Aluminum, food cans, beverage cans, and scrap metal are all great. Aluminum's at an all-time high. If you put nothing else other than aluminum in your recycle bin, that is the best to put in there right now. It has the best footprint, return on footprint right now. And then skipping over, or skipping back up to plastics. So, plastics one, plastic two, plastic five. If you have any questions on anything that you're putting in your container when it comes to plastics, if you will turn it upside down, and there's a lot of different numbers, three, four, six, seven, that are, they are recyclable. However, if no one is buying that return, there's not a home for it, which means when it goes through the machines, it's being pulled out and sent to the landfill. There has to be a buyer for it. So, in the market right now, what we're being faced with is that we have buyers for one, two, and five. So, number ones are examples, water bottles, Coke bottles, cooking oil bottles. Plastic, number two, HDPEs, color and natural, milk jugs, detergent and shampoos. There's other things that fall into these categories, these were just some of the main. One thing to note here is milk jugs and juice that are cartons are not recyclable. So, if you have, buy the actual half-gallon jugs, they are not recyclable, they've got that film lining on the inside. Plastics, number five, so very strong plastic luggage. The other piece here on plastic number five, sometimes on microwaveable plastics, Tupperware, things like that, you'll see a number five on the bottom of that. Those items are recyclable. MRP, those are mixed rigid plastics, and they'll have numbers on them too, but laundry baskets, sometimes you'll see it on a piece of furniture, like plastics out in the yard, just different types of pieces. Those are really thick plastics, so those are recyclable. I get a call probably once a month saying, "Robin, do y'all take a garbage can, a kitchen garbage can, and how can I get my guy to take it?" Because I put it out there, and he doesn't take it. If you want it to be recycled, put it out on your recycle day. If you can, set it in your recycle bin, and put a post-it note on it, and tape it, and say, "Please recycle container." The worst thing is people put their container out there, and they'll have other things in it, and so my guy doesn't want to throw it away, because he doesn't want the call to say, "My can is missing, I set it out there with items in it, and now it's missing." But if you want the container to actually be recycled, put a note on it, just tape it on there, and he'll be happy to recycle it. I think that's it for now, we'll switch over to Greg.
Thank you, Robin. So, again, one of the last things I just wanted to highlight before we go is the next two household cleaning-up events. So, the first one is Operation Clean Duncanville. You see, that's on October 12th, and then we have our Household Hazardous Waste Collection on March 28th of next year. Again, those are on the cards, what will be picked up on each of those events. The other, the other thing that we do take up every year as we get into the fall and Christmas season is, again, I know I probably won't see y'all again on this, so I'll give the plug, is we do take your Christmas trees, the real ones. I usually just bring those to the service center after all the ornaments are off, and then we will take care of the mulching for those on your behalf. Again, this information, just in case you lose the cards, will be coming out in the Duncanville online newsletter. We'll be sending out in September the information about the October Operation Clean Duncanville, and then in February, we'll be sending out the information and reminder about the Household Waste Collection event. So, at this time, I'll open up for questions related to the program. Again, we'll have staff with microphones available for you to speak into, and again, it might not be necessary, because your voice is really loud, but we're asking that you use the microphones so that your questions can be recorded for those who are participating either tonight at home, or come back later and want to talk, or want to follow this town hall at a later date. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a question, and looking around the room, I think my question is probably in the minds of many of you. I'm not so sure that at this point in my life, I'm physically capable of bundling all my stuff, the limbs and so on and so forth. Just a matter of fact. What are we supposed to do? It's an honest question on my part, and maybe for a lot of you as you're going through here, you know, how do I bundle? Okay, I can get it cut into four-foot sections, and I can comply with the four cubic yards, but I can't strap and bundle that stuff in order to comply with the contract. What do we do?
I would tell you tonight, I would not know that answer tonight. I know that we do not have the capability within city staff to assist with that. It would definitely be something we would have to talk with Republic and see if that's something that qualifies under that. I would have to refer to them tonight.
Behind you, ma'am.
You take a three-foot yardstick and tie twine on it with a loop, slide it underneath the bundle, and pull it around and tie it that way. It's that easy.
Does he give a class on that?
Okay, you set it up, and I will.
Since you might need a class on that, let me just make it a little bit simpler. You tie a loop on the end, you lay it down, you pile the brush on top, and then you go ahead and run the loop, run the other end of the string through the loop, and it's done. It's not the mechanics, I do that. I do that. It's not the mechanics of being able to get a rope or a piece of twine around that bundle. It's, some people are physically unable to do that. Okay? You know, as I said, the mechanics of doing that are a simple thing. But looking around, there's a possibility that there's an impairment or something that precludes the ability to do that. So, I'm wondering, what do we as citizens that are impaired and can't do that, how do we do? Robin, I guess you have an answer or input.
I would suggest that they call the service center or Republic and ask for assistance, and we could handle those on a case-by-case basis.
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Boras. I hate to be a spoiler, but I must say that I'm most disappointed in the information that I receive with respect to the bulk branches. Now, the fact is, we are going to be paying more, but it seems as if we will be getting less service. Republic may be, and they are, because they have been picking up for a while. However, I would be curious to know how many other companies did the city people communicate with to see how competitive Republic was with respect to them? Sometimes we have bad weather, and big trees fall, but based on what I'm hearing, we have to pick out the little branches and the trunks. We now would have to find somebody to remove them, or call Republic, who will charge us an enormous fee probably to get it done. So, I don't think the city people did their best possible job.
Well, I mean, so again, when we presented, you know, did all our research, and we presented the options to city council for their consideration, we did bring the knowledge of the other, what the other cities are doing, and what their rates are doing. We also looked at the market in general with, again, the consolidation. There's three players in the solid waste market in DFW, CWD Waste Management, and Republic. And again, all their services are the same, the pricing is all the same, and again, the commonality, or the thing that was most evident during the evaluation process of comparing sole source versus full and open contact, or full and open contract, had to go back with the response that was relayed to city council, which was then relayed to staff, which was, "We want to keep Republic." So, given that, that input, we then went to Republic, and then the conversation was then, "Show us how your rates compare to your competition, show us how your rates on the unit price aspect compared with the bids that you had just completely, or the contracts that you had most recently won." Now, again, the reality is, there were options to have more brush get picked up. As we saw, there was a 10-cubic-yard option that did have brush, and that was one of the options that you saw here tonight. That price was $18 for that, for that level of service, but, you know, as the mayor said, after a lot of deliberation, I know on the, from council, as they were trying to find that option, and I certainly don't want to speak for council, but again, the option was chosen that evening, and the contract that we awarded to Republic was based on option two, which was the brush reduction to the four yards. Now, what I will say is that if there are storms, there is, you know, the ability within the city with, between the city manager and the emergency manager for the city and the city council to make a decision that in certain cases, due to storms, et cetera, that it may be warranted that we bring in contracted help to get a handle on all the excessive brush. But for the day-to-day operation of your, your maintenance of your house, it's true that it is limited for the four yards, and there are some options. Again, if you get help, then have the contractor, if you do it on your own, then your choices are definitely going to be, contact Republic, and they'll pick it up at your house, or take it to organics if it's brush, or take it to the landfill, and that's where the, for the lower rates.
Okay. I've had a, I have a question concerning changing the pickup from my alley to the street, and I've been placing my garbage on the street, but they don't, you know, offer to give me any money back. And I've even made a call and asked them if that change could be made on my bill, and they told me it was impossible. Who is it I talked to in Republic concerning having that change made to, from the alley to the street, and not have to pay the alley fee, which I've not been placing it on the alley anyway? How do I, who do I see, who do I talk to? Because I've gotten an answer, it can't be done, from Republic.
Well, I mean, I think the best thing for your particular case is if you, I know that when we set up the utility billing fees, we make a determination if it's an alley pickup or a curb pickup. The, you know, Republic will pick it up where, again, if they're picking it up on the curb, and you're paying an alley, I think the best thing is for us to get your information, and it may be something that just has to be addressed with the utility billing folks, because they're the ones that determine the fee or what shows up on your bill, not Republic.
Who would that person be in utility billing?
Right now, what I would say is, right behind you, not directly behind you, is to your, well, to my right, is Richard Summerlin, who is our finance director in utility billing. Those personnel work for him.
In recap, right now, to get the service that's being agreed to, it's about a $4.50 increase. If we pay another $2.20, we can get 10 cubic yards of brush pickup. What are the parameters of that 10 cubic yards? What length, do they have to be bundled? What are the dimensions within that for the additional $2.20?
So, again, the 10 cubic yards was to continue the brush truck. And as far as size goes, what we're looking at is, so, this frame back here that you can see over your shoulders is four cubic yards, so we're looking at one and a half
Okay. I think that gentleman says something that I was concerned about, like after a storm, I live by myself, and I'm an old lady, and the first thing I do after a storm is I go and pick all the brush. Now, there are different sizes, there's some that are too long, and I just drag them there, so I cannot, you know, be cutting it to a certain distance so that the city can pick it up. I just take them out there. It's usually not that much. And then when I trim my other trees, the people that dust my trees, they mulch or that. So, do, am I still being charged, even though when I have people working on my trees, instead of leaving it out front, they go ahead in their truck and, you know, mulch or that, so it would not be there?
Well, I can't comment on what contractual relationship you have with your folks, but the consideration would be, again, if you have contractors now that are doing the brush work for you, would be to have that reflected in the price.
I was thinking, I mean, I pay them when I have a lot of work done, like for example, have a tree cut down to the grounders or big branches, okay, but then I get a contractor to do that, and I usually pay extra so they would mulch, so they would not leave any stuff in there for the city to pick up. Now, there were times that I have left things, but they put it, because they know that they... Now, there were times that I have left things, but they put it because they know the, the, the length and stuff that they should cut it and they put it right so that the city can pick it up. And they're pretty good at picking that up too. What I'm, what I'm talking is the stuff that I have to do in a storm, that I have to pick up some debris. I cannot cut it to a certain area and, uh, call a contractor to come in when it's a, a small amount.
Well, um, the, the main thing is, is that, you know, the people that are picking up the brush, um, that would be on your curb as just your normal pickup, which sounds like what it would be if, unless you have a big tree fall down. Uh, it, it has to be four feet because two things. One is that, uh, one of the workers is picking up a bunch of that and it has to still fit in the back of a normal garbage truck. Um, and again, if the challenge of, of taking, uh, you know, an eight-foot branch and making it into two four-foot pieces, uh, that would be something that we would have to, uh, look at and see if it would, would be something for the mobility impaired, um, and under that, under that service, ma'am.
I had the recycle and they were saying that, you know, if it's wet, but sometimes you put stuff in the recycle and it rains. So, in that case, probably take whatever in the recycle and dump it in, in the, in the, in the garbage, so.
Well, I mean, a lot of the things that probably get ruined by the rain would be, like, if you just had your, your paper or stuff like that. Um, the rest of it would be, um, again, the things like, like the, the containers, the plastic containers or the cans, which really aren't gonna be affected. Um, for folks that really like to recycle and, and, you know, have some of those things, um, and again, there is the option for a lidded container if that is interesting, but if you're still small, the best thing to do is just put it out. Um, and, you know, depending on your quantities, um-
I usually, I usually don't have that much trash, you know?
And it may be one of those things where, you know, that morning of the recycling day, you look at it like, "I think it's gonna rain today. Maybe I'll put it out next week 'cause it's only half-full," or something like that. That may be a decision that would have to be made. Otherwise, again, the recycling, there is no change in what we do today with the recycling in terms of, you're still putting it out the same. Um, it's still gonna be exposed to the same weather. It was always exposed to. Really what we're, you know, on the recycling side is just being more mindful of that there are certain things that used to be recyclable and there are certain things that back in, you know, when, before certain materials changed-
Yeah.
-were desirable and they're not. So, it's more of, there's a few things we don't, we don't want to put in the recycling anymore, but if you're just continuously recycling and you're putting it out every week, then it was, that, that will be no change to, to you.
Yes, 'cause I was recycling some of the stuff that not supposed to. But now I know that, oh, it doesn't like plastic bags, so now I know not to do that.
That was very informative to me when I was, um, meeting with Robin and talking about this in more detail.
Uh, I have a couple of, uh, questions. Um, first, I'm never really sure why myself and all the other citizens who live on an alley have to pay seventy-five dollars more per year. We have no choice. Uh, friend over here said he puts it the curb. My understanding is if you have alley pickup, you have to put your, uh, trash and recycles in the alley. And for city services, if you live in an alley, you're paying seventy-five dollars a year more for the same service if you live, uh, beside a curb. The second observation I want to make is that I'm very cynical and don't believe that good things will happen, particularly with the brush pickup. Uh, we have now the new ordinance that it's four cubic feet. Someone puts out brush, tree limbs, whatever, it's more than four cubic feet, so Republic don't pick it up. The resident just leaves it in the street. How long is the city going to let that happen and what are they going to do? Because, believe me, it will happen in the first month.
So, so one of the, um, the main issues is, is I, um, um, I, I would concur that that happens. We, we do have, uh, people who, you know, certain, certain people that also don't mow grass like they're supposed to. Also don't, you know, also leave, um, other trash and stuff in their yards like they're not supposed to either. Um, and I would say this would be the same example. So, again, Republic will not pick up anything more than four cubic yards. So, let's say we were one of those examples where they just, someone went out and put a whole mess of brush on the sidewalk that succeeds it. It would be typically handled like any other code enforcement, um, violation, which would be, we, they would receive a notice of violation that says, "Hey, um, you need to pick up this brush. This is more than the Republic is gonna do. What is your plan to get this brush removed?" Well, that, that may be, um, that may be what the, the, the plan is, but it can't be on the curb at four yards at a time. It would have to be- Well, I, I, again, you know, the, the, the bottom line is, is that I guess there's a certain point where it becomes a code enforcement violation. And, uh, a, a, and I, and I agree. And so, with code enforcement violations, we give opportunity for neighbors, just like, again, with high grass and weeds or, or extra junk in the yard, um, or fences, or any of the other multiple things that, um- So, um, so again, the, the, the end state would be, for the folks who aren't complying, would be more than likely a citation and/or an abatement where a contractor would come in and, and fetch it and then we would send them an invoice.
The one question that I did have that hasn't been addressed is the, um, justification, is the justification for the recycling to keep that the same? I know it's not your issue because you, you laid out the options, but to the city council, you don't have to answer this right now, but it is, I don't understand that justification. If the bottle collection has gone completely away, and I understand the business side of that, and many of the plastic and the corrugation or the cardboard, uh, dome topped cardboard goes away. Why keep that service the same? Not, why not put that money into the real issue in a tree city like Duncanville is to get the brush away from the curb? And that, that just, and I know you can't answer that. That's, that's the issue that I, I don't understand for one percent difference.
Hey, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, this is actually my first hour of first town hall meeting. Uh, been living here for about four years. Uh, but I don't really have a question. I just have more of a, a charge, if you will. Um, uh, and that charge is an initiative for the community to, uh, I just really wish we could start containing more of our household waste to prevent, to prevent littering, um, just because I, personally, I don't like seeing just trash bags, you know, put on side of the road, especially in a, in a town and a community where we have, uh, you know, stray dogs or cats, uh, possums, raccoons. Uh, um, it's been quite often where, uh, my neighbor's trash has been ripped open and that gets into my yard. Um, I don't know if this happens to anybody else, but, um, you know, a simple solution to this would be, uh, the city supplying trash cans um, or the, uh, residents purchasing, you know, twenty or thirty-dollar trash bins. And, um, uh, and then that would solve the problem. So, you know, if you will, I wish we could, you know, contain the littering problem, that's all.
My name's Bob Tutt. I've been living here since nineteen fifty-eight. Uh, and I complain about this alley pickup because when they started this, they said it was because they had to use different trucks. And you just said they set the rates, but I wanna know why we're having to pay more. Them trucks don't tear up them alleys. I've been living in that house forty years, nobody's touched. I could, I've been told and I can only think of one alley, there's been anything done to in the last two years. And that's 'cause they run a sewer line down one of them or a motor line. But, I mean, it ain't that much, but it don't seem fair when those trucks go down Center Street and see how they're tearing up that street. I mean, we're paying for all of that. When, when they paid Camp Wyndham, we had to pay for half of, uh, where our offices was for that street. Now, I'm not sure if some of the people are getting alleys or having to pay for part of them either. I'd just like to know. I didn't know that they have to elder, elder, because some people, at times, I don't take my recycle bin down to the alley 'cause I can't walk that far. And I didn't have any idea we had some, they don't advertise that. But that, and that, for those bungs, those limbs, that's been on the books forever. I just lay my binder down and stand on it and put, put the sticks down on it and then tie it up. And I hold on to the fence sometime, but I, that's not something new. That four-foot deal has been, has been forever for us. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to take up on you.
Okay. I've been here since ninety-eight. Y'all, with these, this, this change that y'all just did, we're paying more money for nothing, as far as what I can see right now. I don't know what this survey that y'all did that asked the city people in Duncanville their opinion. I never got one of those surveys. I'm one of those people that had soul panels put up on their house, so they did cut my trees. They cut my brother's trees. Took him a, a month and four phone calls to Republic to come and pick it up. They say, "Oh, somebody parked in front of, uh, somebody parked their car in front of it." My brother blamed, it was blamed on him 'cause they couldn't pick it up. Somebody parked the car there. It laid there for a month. I got debris, trash, tree limbs in my back alleyway right now, Valley View, that still have not been picked up because you don't run the alleyway on my side of the freeway. We keep paying a higher cost for nothing. You're cutting service, four feet, four cubic feet, that's nothing when you're talking about tree branches. And I know y'all know that. I'm a female and I know that. I cut my own yard. I edge, sweep, blow, I do all of that. Four cubic feet and now we gotta pay additional costs to pick up debris. It's just not, it's, it's wrong. I want this gentleman right here, more money, less service. That's the way I see it. And I've been here, again, since ninety-eight. The ordinance is not being kept up like it used to be kept up, but you want us to pay more money. It's wrong. It's flat-out wrong. I'm a single female. I have to clean and pick up debris at my house. I get no help, so now I gotta pay somebody else. So, when I called them out to pick up a large bundle, if somebody happened to park in front of my house that day, what, they gonna not pick it up and keep going and then come charge me another hundred-dollar fee to come back out? No answer for that. Thank y'all, that's all I have to say. It's wrong.
Ma'am? Ma'am? Thank you very much for those comments because I, I totally agree with what you're saying. And to that point and to Mayor, what you've said earlier today, I, I wanna begin pushing for the city of Duncanville to have a citizens' satisfaction survey. The, uh, what is it? The, uh, the International City and County Management, International Management Association has standards on these. And according to the last numbers that I read, uh, forty-three percent of the cities the size of Duncanville have that survey taken at least once every five or six years. I checked into that and, and Duncanville's never been a party to any of those. And what that does is that survey, uh, looks, uh, it looks to exactly this type of an issue to say, "How are our seated leadership doing? How, are we satisfied with the performance levels? What is the unit of measure and how is that measure being performed?" So, things like the city, uh, sewage and the trash and the other issues that are involved in, in the, in the huge job, really, of city management are evaluated and you guys have a better opportunity to steer this thing right. And it's the way that people want things to be, long-range, short-range, planned. And I just don't feel that's happening. The questions that I ask aren't getting, like, reasonable conclusions or observations. I get, I get, like, opinions of something, but I don't get data that supports those. And that's what's so very painful to me. I'm not used to operating that way. And that's all I see Duncanville doing is just flying by the seat of their pants.
Okay. It's my understanding that they're gonna just use the brush trucks or they're no longer using brush trucks. Is that correct?
For the new, uh, for the four cubic yard would not be by brush truck. That's correct.
Okay. So, what will they be doing with all the branches and the trees that are, um, cut and put out at the curb?
Well, we would be, the, the brush, as you're talking about in terms of demand, would be the four cubic yards of the brush that would be bundled is what would be picked up with the normal contract.
And where are they gonna take it?
Where is, where is-
Where will it end up in? The dump?
If it's a mix, if it's, if it's mixed, they're not gonna, if they're just picking up the bowl-
So, every tree here is gonna end up in the dump, is that right? If it's put at the curb, it's no longer turned into mulch or sent to another facility where it can be recycled. Every single tree in our city will then end up in the dump, is that correct? That's not right. That's bad. You can't be a tree city and turn around and, you just can't do that. That's wrong.
I think there was someone-
Yes, sir?
Second table? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to talk about recycling for a moment. The point was made here that, um, instead of turning this into mulch, that it just go into the landfill. We have, and, I'm sorry, is Wendy? No. The, the whole idea behind recycling is not necessarily to make a profit. We understand that the, that the market has gone down for recycling, but we don't recycle for profit. I know it's a capitalist society and we've gotta go ahead and make profit, but sometimes you just do things because it's the right thing to do. You take the branches, you turn it into mulch. You take the Christmas trees, you turn it into mulch. Glass bottles, does anybody here even know how long it takes for a glass bottle to decompose in a landfill? Almost. It's over a million years. Now, Re- Republic has the resources to find a home for this where it doesn't go ahead and sit in a landfill for a million years, yet because it's not profitable, they're not gonna do it. Yes, it's heavy. I understand that. There are certain plastics that are not, that, it's not cost-effective. But it's not always about cost. It's about what's doing right for the better good of everyone. And that's really what we should all be looking for, particularly when it comes to recycling. The four cubic feet, I hate to see that go in a landfill. It's just not right. That stuff should be mulched. They have plenty of little chippers that you can take and put that stuff in and recycle it, turn it into mulch, put it around your flowerbeds. There's all kinds of things you can do with this to keep it out of the landfills, but because of profit, it's not happening. And I'm sorry to say that we may just have to eat a little bit of profit to do what's right for the better good of everyone.
I think there was someone else at this table.
Yeah, I'm curious, how, what was the information relayed to the citizens of Duncanville? You see the small, I consider this a small group of citizens of Duncanville, okay? Ninety-eight percent of people have no idea that this is going on until it hits their bill. Personally, I pay my bills online. I get nothing in the mail. I get no notifications of anything. You say that you took in, uh, consideration response from people from emails. How many people are computer literate? You got a lot of, uh, senior citizens that are not computer literate to be able to get that information and what have you. How are you justifying the correspondence that you receive to make the adequate decisions that you need to make for different things for Duncanville? 'Cause ninety-eight percent of people, you know, they're not getting the information. You have this small group of people that are concerned, you know, we understand the economy, everything's going up. Everybody wants their little piece of the pie and what have you, which is fine. That's understandable. That's growth. But how many people's surveys percentage did you have from the people of Duncanville to make these decisions? Anybody? Mayor? Council people? You know, anybody?
I'll answer it. There was an adequate and ample amount of information that was disseminated in the community in terms of adding for input. And I can say that with assurance and with the confidence because of the inputs that each of us received. I received over twenty-six emails and phone calls. Listen to me. Listen to me. The people that choose to respond, choose to respond. Those that term to choose not to, do not. We respond- But to generalize and make a broad, to generalize and make a broad brush indictment against the city that we didn't advertise is unfair.
I did not receive any notification other than a sign out in the street that there was gonna be a meeting about our, our trash. I got no notification through the mail. That's kinda what we're asking for, is communication, send flowers out to the citizens of Duncanville.
Then we can go back to the individuals that send the information to all of us and say, how did you learn about it? Because there was ample of communication that was disseminated.
I didn't receive anything. I didn't receive anything. There were posters on there, there were signs.
There were signs in the street. I don't get on the street that much. I'm handicapped, my husband's handicapped, we both just got out of the hospital and what have you. I don't run up and down the streets to see, uh, when the meetings and stuff are gonna be. I have been to some of the council meetings, but I've also received notices in the mail stating that such and such is gonna happen. All I'm asking for is a little bit more communication to the overall citizens of Duncanville. And I don't think that's too much to ask.
It's not too much to ask and we will comply.
Okay, I'd appreciate it, that a way we can stay more informed.
And what I'm saying is that there were a number of citizens in this community that were well-informed and knew about it enough to provide the input to each of us in very, very large amounts.
Do you hear the letter that they sent out to these people? We never got one.
There was information put out in the Champion Newsletter, there was information put out in the water bills as well. Your in, your input is, is, is well-taken. Your input is well-taken. Ms. Bane?
I went to the initial trash meeting that was, I don't remember when it was, way back when, and, um, I know a lot of people attended that were here, and it's my understanding that the majority of the people that did attend that meeting did say that they wanted to stick with the Republic, but it was because they wanted to keep their existing level of service. And I understand that the council then decided not to move forward and get other bids on the contract because people were satisfied with Republic, but we wanted the existing service that we have. Um, I have no doubt that Republic is a good company and has provided us with a good level of service through the years, but from the initial meeting to the second meeting, the pricing that was presented at the initial meeting and the level of options changed. The prices increased and the level of options decreased after we determined that we were going to stick with Republic. So I think that that is the reason that a lot of people are upset. Um, I know that a lot of people, if we had been informed that they were gonna eliminate glass, no longer recycle, you know, plastics three, four, or six, seven, and then we would no longer have unlimited bulk services for our trees, and it would eliminate the brush pickup that's gonna end up in the landfill, a lot of people would've said, go out for more contracts, look for other people, let's work as a community to find better solutions to recycling, to bulk, to trash, to all of these things. And we didn't do that, and I'm just curious as to when y'all determined that we were eliminating all these things, but you didn't notify the public about it to give us a better option to see if we wanted to go in a different direction.
Yes, ma'am.
I listened with a lot of interest to everything that everybody had to say. My name is Janice Oldham. I've lived here almost forty years. Unfortunately, I don't have the strength I used to have to come to all the different board meetings and hear everything has to say. I will say, there's been information, if you, uh, are on some of these networks and things, to see what's going on. But one of the interesting things I found tonight about this meeting tonight is I got a, a, a Facebook notice telling me, again, this late in the afternoon, that this meeting was going to transpire, where, what time, and obviously, we've had a pretty good turnout. Um, I guess the suggestion that I might have after all these years is to say, um, maybe that is a platform, among others, that we might use so that the day of the meeting and several days before that, we use the platforms that are available to us to remind us to come and have input to our council member, our mayor, maybe the departments that are over that particular topic, but we do have to engender as many of our residents, particularly owners, to come and take an interest in the community. We need positive input to grow the city, to make the city a better place for everybody, regardless of whether you live in a hundred thousand dollar house or a five hundred thousand dollar house. We all have the same interest, and that's the betterment of where we live. And we have a lot of opportunities, but we have to have valid input so that those that are elected to represent us have an opportunity to really have input from the people who are paying the taxes, paying the bills, and supporting the things that we know are good for the city. But we need as much input and as much information as to what, how many bids are we getting? Have we solicited this? Do we have that? Yeah, it takes a lot of work on the people who have been willing to run for the position, and I applaud them for that because it's not simple and it's not easy. And if you never held a position of public trust, you won't know the battle that it is. So I'm just saying, as a city, as any department head, as any commu- communication person that we're paying to work for the city, more and better information across the board before a decision is made. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I want to reiterate something I said at the very outset, and maybe it didn't ring true enough, or maybe it wasn't accepted, or maybe you really didn't hear what I was trying to say. This was not an easy decision for any of us. To raise the cost of any service in this city is deeply concerning to every one of us on council and every one of us on staff. If we could have in any possible way maintained the current service that many, many people asked us to maintain, without a price increase, do you think we would've done it? Of course we would. There are only three waste management services corporations in the United States that operate where we are. Gregory and me just cited those. CWD, Waste Management, and Republic. That's all there is. And when it came time to begin this work a year ago, due diligence was exercised to examine the rates and to find out what other cities were being charged. And those rates were brought before us, and the rates were comparable to what Republic was being, was quoting us. So you take that information and you couple it with the input that we received from many citizens saying, we like Republic, don't change Republic. And you churn that into some kind of qualifiable information. This is where we are today. To expect any corporation to embark on a new contract in a new economic condition, in a new environment, in an industry that's in decline in terms of recycling, that recycling, did you hear Greg said? Recycling used to pay for our service. It doesn't now. It's a detractor. Recycling costs, it doesn't pay anymore. But I am a recycler, my wife is a recycler, many, many of you are recyclers. We wanted to keep that service. Does that service come free? No. It comes at a cost. And Republic did everything they possibly could to sharpen their pencils and to squeeze every penny out of their fees to us as a city. I trust them for that. Whether you do or not is not my issue, but I trust Republic for what they do for us to scrub down every penny that they could to still make a reasonable profit for their shareholders and their stakeholders and still do the very best for our citizens. Am I thankful that our prices are going up? No. But I'm not gonna complain about it. Because we are an environment in terms of understanding how the dynamic of economics works in the system of capitalism. So please understand, we did not shaft you on purpose. We did everything we possibly could to minimize your costs and to keep the services that you wanted. If you wanted to not pay more, we can go back and renegotiate this contract. We'll cut it down. We'll take it back to eleven dollars and eighty-seven cents, and you'll live with the reduced service, if that's what you want. I don't think that's what you want. It's not what I want. Now, I'm speaking pretty plainly, and I'm not speaking as a politician because that's what I'm not. Any decision that I make in city council, I do for what I think is the best for this city, and the last thing I do when I make a decision is to think about if I'm gonna get re-elected, because I don't really wanna do that. So being a politician only means that I'm in this process. But every one of us on council has a deep love for this city, and believe me, the balancing of service and cost goes right to our hearts every single time we have to examine what goes on in this city. You may not remember some of the information that was passed about when, when we talked about, when Mr. Summerlin was talking about our general budget. Every service that is provided to you in our city averages about three dollars a day. Three bucks a day. You get fire, you get police, you get trash, you get sewage, you get water, and your average cost for everyone, every household in this city is about three bucks a day. Now, I think that's commendable. Now, you begin to split this out into pieces and say, well, shoot, three bucks a day is okay, but if you would've messed with that contract just a little bit longer and, and taken another four bucks out of my trash, well then it'd be two dollars and ninety-six Yeah, I'm emotional, and I apologize for it. But I love this city. And we will accept criticism, and we will accept critique, but we will do our very best for you. And as I said also at the outset, some of it is acquiescence, which means we've done our best, and we're very sorry if we have not satisfied one hundred percent of our citizenry. Because that is impossible to satisfy one hundred percent. We will do our best.
I think people are taking this so to heart because it's, you know, it's not something that you, you feel or you have in your hand or something, but you have to think of it like this. When I was sixteen years old, I had to have a bunch of dental work done. Back then, it was ninety dollars to have a crown made. Today, it's a thousand dollars to have a crown made. Yes, that's been forty years, you know, but, or fifty years, I guess, fifty years, I forget how old I am, uh, but that's the thing, is there's always gonna be a rate increase on every single aspect of your life. You know, if you wanna have nice flowers and trees and stuff in your yard, I mean, I guess if you want to, you can just cut down all those trees and take care of it at one time, and you won't ever have to do that. But somehow, you're gonna lose the benefit of, of taking care of your property, paying for it, for recycling what you can. That doesn't make sense to not recycle what you can. So I just wanna remind everybody, everything has a, a price increase, you know? I'm lis- listening to the news today, they said that gas right now is at a three-year low. It was nineteen, I mean, twenty sixteen that it was this low. So it's cyclical. It, uh, it's all it is, it's gonna happen. Thank you.
This lady here and then this gentleman back here.
I think the issue is not, I mean, for me, like she said, there's gonna be an increase in everything, even on AM, the AT&T bill, there's an increase every, um, the trash is just a portion of our water bill that's increased. Our water bill has really increased, and I know the trash portion of it is a small part, so we need to address the other part of the water bill as well.
Yeah, I, I kinda question, Barry, what you said regarding the budget and the cost of city services. Trash is something we pay for. That's not part of the budget, that's part of the general fund. Uh, this is something that each individual on their own bill pays for separately. So it really is not included in the cost of city services. So my question is, what do we need to do if we're that unhappy with what's been negotiated to renegotiate and let our feelings be known as to what we would rather have? Can we still get a survey out? Can we do something that can help people have a voice that's meaningful?
I can't answer that, Mr. Jameson, because I don't know what the timeframes are in terms of, everybody here from Republic has heard what the comments are tonight, and those comments have merit. I don't discount the merit of any of those comments. What we need to do is accept the information that's been given and have some discussions between Mr. Ramey and his staff, and city staff, and Republic to see what can be done. Whether anything can be done at this point in time, I don't know. We're on the precipice of having this thing enacted. Now, one thing I'd like April to do, April Riling is our Public Information Officer, she's back there with the microphone. April, would you please give us a capsulization of how information is disseminated through our community for these people?
Well, your, uh, the Champion Newsletter goes out in your utility bill every month, so there's a print version that you get in your mailbox, and if you're signed up for e-bills, you can click on a button that says, uh, view newsletters, and it'll pull up all of our past newsletters. So whether you're online or you're preferred in the mail, that newsletter is accessible. Um, we've also got social media, as, as the nice young lady pointed out, we use Facebook, we use Twitter, this was on Nextdoor, um, we've had information available at City Hall. The LED sign at the corner here had a, a marquee up for four weeks, I think. So, um, you know, we use every channel that we have available to push this kind of information out. And the other lady mentioned mailers. Um, we can do a better job with that, and I've actually built in monies for next fiscal year to be a little more aggressive with postcard mailers, so we will work on that.
Good evening. Uh, thank you all for the great turnout we've had here. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Kevin Hugman, I'm the city manager. I would like to make one comment about the trash service and, and the service that you receive. And I know this is probably not gonna go over real well, but I, I wanna kinda try to put this in a different context for you. Cities and municipalities provide public service because of the intent of providing service to citizens that is of the public benefit, of the public good. We're not here to compete with the private sector with taxpayer money. So when you think about solid waste pickup, why do we do that? We do it because it's a public health and safety issue, and that goes back to ancient times, that if you people left refuge- And that goes back to ancient times. That if you people left refuse and garbage out, it bred diseases and people got sick and died. So cities, towns, groups of villages started picking up trash. And that's how cities started doing that. And that's why we provide that service to our citizens. It's a public health and safety benefit. We do it as an enterprise function though. So it has to pay for itself. So that's why you pay for that service. Through the years, we were able to provide a higher level of service at a relatively low cost. And at some point in time or beginning of the contract, Duncanville had unlimited brush pickup. That is not a standard anymore. Most cities, very few cities, if any, I don't know of any that do that anymore that have unlimited brush pickup. And the reason is, is because for the most part, it is not a public safety and health issue. It's a private issue. If you have a lot of trees, it's like your house maintenance. You have to pay for that maintenance. But the city has been doing that for a long time and we know that that's a very painful process to change right now. But that, but the council, I believe, struggled with that to provide the, the most service they could at the most reasonable cost and considering what was the greatest public benefit. And when you have unlimited brush pickup, those who have lots of trees and lots of brush are paying a very small price for that. And then a lot of other citizens in the city are paying for that cost and they may not ever have any brush. They might not even have any trees, but they're paying for that. And that is an expensive piece of this service. So if you think of it in that context, I don't know if that makes you feel at least a little bit better to understand why these decisions were made. But that's really what's behind it is that that unlimited brush pickup is just not, is just too costly. And it's really more of a private benefit for those who have large trees and a lot of trees and maintain them. Now, as we said, in the event of an emergency, it's, um, severe weather, then we're going to address that because that becomes a public health and safety issue then. We have to get that brush up. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a mic thing to go over here?
Okay. I was just curious. I can't recall correctly. I know we had the initial trash meeting. Um, did we ever have a town hall meeting for the trash?
Are you talking about, do we have a meeting that preceded this meeting regarding trash?
Yes.
Uh, we did not have a town hall meeting regarding trash.
Okay. So I'm just curious as to why, because, you know, as others have stated, the citizens pay the direct cost for these services. And we have town hall meetings for, um, various other topics. And obviously, I mean, based on the response that you get from a lot of different people in the community, trash pickup is an important topic to them. And how much they pay and what level of service that they receive, um, people really would like to have input into that. And it's my understanding that we only had like the initial trash meeting and then we kind of moved forward with the council having their discussions about it. But there was not really a whole lot of citizen input that was sought. Um, I just think that we are doing things in reverse order. Like we've already decided on this contract, but we really didn't seek much input from our citizens and we're expected to pay all the cost. Uh, it just seems like you have a town hall meeting after the fact and here we are tonight being told there's really not anything that we can do about it or nothing that we can do to change it. And there wasn't a whole lot of input sought.
Well, I can tell you that we did not have a dedicated town hall to this event, but I've been at all the town halls and there have been opportunities. Um, just like one of the gentlemen over here where they were talking about, uh, asking consideration about carts. Um, there've been other, um, town halls where we talked about the budget and what you wanted to look at. And budget, and so yes, there was not a, uh, a meeting like this where the focus was only this. But there were multiple town halls where the topic of this did come up and citizen input was provided at those times.
But were y'all discussing with citizens that our level of service was going to decrease? I mean, did people actually know? I mean, people are upset that they're not going to recycle glass and all these plastics, that all these materials are going to be ending up in the landfill. And I understand that you're saying that, um, the other trash companies aren't going to do it either. Uh, did y'all compare that? I know you compared the cost. Did you compare the levels of service that's going to be offered from the other trash companies that we didn't seek bids from?
We, we did compare levels of service. Um, and again, one of the big levels of service that was a, a big um, consideration as well was that the desire for the bags themselves. That was a, one of the continuations was, um, was a request for bags. Now, that is a service that is not offered by everybody. Well.
Community Waste? They offer bag service?
Okay. Um, now, again, the big, the big things that we, we have, we had to consider, and there are a lot of, you know, right now, we still pick up glass too. The thing is, is what we're looking at is what are the, the most recent contracts that are being awarded and what is the market going forward?
Okay.
We're, we're operating off of a twenty-year-old contract with information, um, that we had twenty years ago. Now we're sort of looking back in hindsight. And so these contracts, as they come available, those contracts are going to, you know, the, the market that's at the time in effect, the time that their contract's going to affect is what's going to be driving those, those factors as well.
Right. But are you certain that we could not have contracted with Community Waste and they still offer glass and the other plastics? Are you certain?
I, I don't recall right now, ma'am, no.
Okay, this is back to the, uh, brush. Uh, do I understand that until the twenty-first, we have a regular pickup of brush, but after the twenty-first, we're going to, our neighborhoods are going to be put on a weekly schedule?
Um, no, ma'am. Um, the, the change in the brush from the, the current level of service to the, um, the new level of service goes into effect the week of sixth October.
Okay, so in, so in other words, after that time, we'll get a notice about when it, when is our week to be put out the brush? Is that?
That's correct. The, um, the, the flyer that we provided here, on the back of it, if, if you look at where you live on the, on the map, it will tell you if you're a green week, a pink week, a blue week, or a, uh, orange week. And in that case, that is when would be the week that your four cubic yards of bulk and brushes collected.
But, but not until this time, not until October?
Not until, um, the week of sixth October.
So now I can be putting it out now anytime, is that?
Right now, the current contract is still in effect and the current level of service is still in effect. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, you, um, you made the comment that you grind, you pick up and grind Christmas trees? So the city has the facilities to grind up trees?
We collect a yard and then when we get a whole bunch of them, then we bring in organics. They come to the city and grind them up and that is, um, goes into the mulch pile at the service center. So no, we have no internal capabilities to do any chipping services. Um, what happens again with, uh, brush that is collected by like our, our drainage crew? So when they're out cleaning the creeks and cleaning storm drains or a tree falls over the right of way and we've got to, um, pick it up. That all gets collected down at the service center and when the, the bulk and brushes, or the, when the brush gets to a certain level of accumulation, then we'll bring out a contractor who will then mulch it and provide those piles for the citizens.
Okay. And as far as the services that the city provides, I'm sure Mr. Mayor knows if for an ambulance to take a patient from my house to Charlton Methodist, two and a half miles is over fifteen hundred dollars. So we're paying for a lot of those services out of our pockets. It's not, it's not like a freebie that the city's giving us, so.
I want to make a comment. Uh, I hear a lot of things tonight and I understand nobody likes to pay any more money than you, than you have to. I, I don't like paying more for a Whataburger when it goes up. But the bottom line is, this council was charged to make some tough decisions. And it's been that way for years. You can't please everybody on everything. The bottom line was, years back, we closed the swimming pool. Why? Because only ten percent or less than ten percent of the citizens used it. The other ninety percent didn't want to pay for it. So we're looking at the same thing here. So, uh, it's a win, lose deal, either way you go, you know, but the bottom line is we pay more. And I just want to say thank you to the council members and all for making tough decisions. It, it's tough to do. But there's been tough decisions made throughout this city all along. And sometimes you just bite the bullet. You know, when that gas got up to three eighty, three sixty, we didn't like that. But if you wanted to drive your car, you went and pumped to the pump and you put it in there. So sometimes we just have to bite the bullet and pay what we do. I think, uh, we've been a pretty fortunate city with city services. And, uh, I think if I looked around in all the other cities, I'll take Duncanville any day. Thank you.
I've been here since, uh, nineteen eighty-five and I've got, uh, did most of my landscaping and, uh, my trees are pretty big. I've got about eleven of them total now. Um, I do most of the work myself, like the lady that was here earlier. And so I have some brush that blows down. I have some limbs that, you know, they self-prune. So my question is, during the regular trash pickup week, am I able to throw some limbs out there, like maybe ten or fifteen at the most, that are relatively short and small with my regular trash? That's my first question. Like we do now. Uh, the trash guys come by and they pick that up. Um, when you just lay them right next to the bags or whatever, they generally just grab them and, uh, I have to say this, uh, in, in interjecting here. The motto of our city has been trees and no traffic. Y'all remember that? I must be getting old. Steve, help me out here. Um, we, uh, we have a lot of nice landscaping in, in Duncanville, a lot of trees. And a lot of residences, the residents take care of their trees. Um, we trim them, we keep the property values up. I think the lack of the brush pile cleanup, you know, if you don't pick it up during the regular weekday, is just going to have you, you know, brush laying around. And if that's the case, why can't we take it to the city service center and drop it off there and maybe have the, have it chipped there? So my first question is, can we put limbs out there during the two trash pickup days during the week, a small amount? Will that still be picked up?
So that's a tricky question because we have it set up on, on schedule for the brush to be picked up on, um, sequence of, of the separated weeks. Um, if you put a amount, a, a small amount, not limbs, but your trimmings with your trash, a small amount, most likely it's, you're not going to have any issues. You're going to have it collected, just like you do now. Um, what's going to be an issue is when you have a table full of limbs, right? So if you pull up and you've had something knocked down, a rose bush or, you know, something trimmed off one limb down with a bag, most likely he's going to pick it up. My ops manager is scooching up this way. Um, he's going to pick it up with your bags. Um, when you have a whole half of a tree or multiple bundles, it's going, he's going to tag it.
Yeah. I'm talking about if we've gone out on that weekend and we've done a little bit of trimming and picked up some stuff, just a very small amount, like ten or fifteen limbs that are real small, three or four feet long or whatever, can we put that out with our trash like we do now?
So here's, here's the answer to that. So everybody in here has a different opinion of what a small pile is. Okay? So once we open that door, right, then we start getting four, five, six yards of, of debris and brush, right? So.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about three cubic feet. Seriously, I know measurement. I'm talking about, about three cubic feet maybe or less.
I would tell you it needs to be in trash bags, right? We're picking up regular household trash on the regular day and all brush will be on your bulk week.
Okay, so that stuff is expected for the residents to have all that crap laying around in our driveways or the alleyway or whatever until our bulk pickup is. Even if it is about, you know, five cubic feet, not, not very mu- much amount. Okay, here's my next question. On the bulk, if we have, if we trim our trees, I have been one of those people, my wife and I, we filled up from, you know, that wall all the way over here on our sidewalk, four feet tall. We've been guilty of that, but we got some nice trees. Um, and I, I understand the cost of the service, but what's going to happen when they come out there and we call and they look at it and go, hey, this is way over four cubic yards? Um, and who's going to determine the price? Number one, arbitrarily, is it going to just be, you know, is it flat hundred bucks? Okay, yeah, I can live with that if that's the fee. But if it's going to be a hundred and twenty-five or two hundred or whatever that is and you get shocked. And number two, how are we going to pay for it? We're going to have to give somebody a credit card number? You know, is the trash guy going to come by with the machine or what?
So to, to answer the first part of that, so we, we kind of break it down by the hour, right? So we know what our average cost per hour it is to run a truck. All right? So if it comes out, there's going to be a minimum of an hour, right? Because we got to leave the yard, we got to come out here, we got to take it to the landfill, right? And then we got to go back. So there's your hour right there. Um, and then the second part of that is you would call our customer service and they're going to take your credit card, just like, you know, most, most companies will over the phone.
Yeah, how, what kind of securities involved there? So when we're giving our number out with our credit card that we want to do that? That's a big concern.
I understand. We are, we deal with credit cards for, uh, customers, uh, customers, commercial, industrial, residential on a subscription basis all day, every day. We have checks and balances surveying Oxley's. So, um, we take your credit card over the phone, it's put into our system, it's not recorded, it's not, um, kept at all on a paper trail. Uh, if you were to call back in, it's not retained. We have to take it again the next time.
We're short on time, Robin. So I'm going to get my other question out. Now, I have to commend you guys on this. I've been very proud and bragging on the service that Republic has done in our city on brush service. I have been one of those guys that's been spoiled rotten by all this trash being picked up, okay? I understand that. And I'm willing to pay for it. But here's the question. A- and I'd like to say that the brush pile guys that we have with the boom truck, they're fantastic. They don't tear your yard up, they don't scrape the sidewalks up. They do an excellent job. I saw one of them working today. And, uh, they really do a good job. I have to say that. Um, but, you know, it takes them, even with a, a whole row, you know, forty, fifty feet long, four feet deep, quite a bit of it, it takes them about, uh, they're quick. About thirty minutes. So let's say thirty minutes. So what's the charge going to be? About an hour service call and then about a half an hour? So I can expect what, a hundred and fifty bucks? It's a very arbitrary thing. Who's going to come out? Give me an estimate?
Yeah, so we, we do have a supervisor that's committed to the city. Um, Anthony M.C. is, he's here tonight. He's in the city every day. So when we get that call, he will be coming by to provide estimates to the resident. It's always, it's going to be an hour minimum and it's, it's always going to be around an hour. Like the gentleman said, it does not take us, you know, that long to pick up the piles, right? It's more about the commute to and from the landfills and the yard.
But we give you a credit card number in advance and then you, then we get a surprise when the bill comes in, is?
Right. So yeah, you would just call ahead of time and call the customer service. It's around a hundred dollars, right?
Thank all y'all for coming out for this, but the question I have, shifting gears, was talked about glass. Is there any opportunity for us to utilize glass? To have glass being treated differently? Is, I know there's not a market, but is there projections for a market to come? And I had a second question, but we're thinking out of time. I was wondering, who does a sniff test to recycle sorting it out? Oh, this milk, there's milk in this jug. It's gone. I just, but.
So Alan, I'm going to let you be our sniffer, but, um, there's not a sniff test. Uh, we're not literally going through everyone's containers and seeing if it's clean or not. Overall, it's contaminated. So if uh, House A is putting in a jug half-full, it's contaminating half of that load, right, or, or a quarter of that load. Um, every bit of Duncanville's recycle is being put together and we're getting reports monthly on the contamination level of Duncanville. Pricing throughout the year is compared on those stats, month over month, year over year, and pricing gets compared. So, um, overall, you're wanting your contamination to be cleaner and cleaner because that im-
because that improves, improves those numbers. So we're not literally looking at everything that you're putting in your container. So no sniffing per se. The first question was...
About glass?
Oh, glass, yes, sir. So glass is a negative impact right now. There is a market in Texas for glass, but by the time that we pick it up and we take it to the recycle center and it's processed there and then we ship it back to the recyc, to the vendor that's purchasing glass, because there is a purchaser in Texas, it's a negative impact. And so in going back and forth with city staff and trying to make decisions to better improve the price that you're receiving now, at the bottom line, it was decided to take and pull glass out because everything on our side is done by weight. Weight at the scales, the time that we pick it up from you, weight at the scales at the recycle center, weight shipping it back, weight at the scales at the vendor buying the glass. So it was decided to pull it out to try to save some of the dollars and the impact back at the residents. So there is buyers, but it's a negative, it's basically a negative $10 per ton impact back to the residents or to, to the aspires. So the city is looking into options for glass. Now, we have, don't have an answer or a solution right now, but we are trying to find some other solutions.
Yeah, that's, that's about as far as we're at, isn't it?
Yeah.
We have one lead that we were looking at.
We're working on that.
I'm gonna bring this to a close. We appreciate all the input, positive and negative. We live in a society, and I'm gonna raise this to a 50,000-foot level. It's philosophical and if you don't like it, okay. But the 50,000-foot level is, we live in a society that gives you the freedom to complain. And that's what you've done. Are we perfect? No. Do we strive to be? We do. I learned a long time ago from a great guy that was a great mentor to me. And he said this. Very few people wake up in the morning and go to work and say, "How can I screw up today?" Most people, most of you, myself, all of us really, wake up in the morning and go to work and say, "How can I do my best today?" Our city staff are wonderful, dedicated people. And I will stand here and stand behind every one of them and say, not one of them wakes up in the morning and say, "I'm going to work today and see how I can screw citizens today." And I'm serious. Because are we perfect? No, we are not perfect beings. Thank God we are not perfect beings. We do make mistakes. And yes, flaws in our process were brought out tonight? Maybe so. And if those flaws are fatal flaws, we apologize, but I don't think they're fatal flaws. We did our very best. And when I say due diligence, I mean due diligence. Hours and hundreds of hours went into this process. It was not an overnight deal. It was a year-long deal. Could things have been differently, done differently? Possibly. Great point was made, you know, why do all, why do all of our trees have to go somewhere instead of being mulched? Good question. I don't have the answer, but it's something we can continue to look into. We are a great society and we have a society that allows us to complain. That's what we have fought for, that's what we have bled for, the freedom to complain. And I thank you for your complaints because you have exercised your freedom of the society we live in. So thank you for being here tonight. All of your inputs have been accepted and we'll do our very best to please you as much as we can in the future. Thank you and good night.